Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the last council meeting for the year, the ninth of December. This is the ordinary council meeting and the time is nine o'clock. Attendance, I can see everyone's in full attendance this morning. Good morning all, and we'll move straight to an acknowledgement of country by councillor Coonselman.
Thank you, Mayor. We recognise that there are traditional custodians of this land on which we meet and make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land. We pay respect to those traditional custodians acknowledging past and present leaders and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge.
Thank you very much, councillor Coonselman. We'll move on to the opening prayer and councillor Tully, may I ask you to lead us into prayer?
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bring strength and encouragement in whatever we do and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give us the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, councillor Tully. We move on to apologies and leave of absence, I have none. So we're to item five, which is the condolences. I understand councillor Milligan, you have a condolence motion that you'd like to speak to.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city to the family of Mr Matthew Bowden. We wish to celebrate Matthew's life and his immense contribution to the Marburg community. Matthew passed away on the 24th of November at the age of 42 after a brave battle with cancer. Matt was a sportsman, family man, had a hilarious sense of humour and was loved by his entire community. He was always up for a chat and was the sort of bloke everyone wanted to call their friend. The leading man of the Marburg Hotel, Matthew lived and breathed the community's pub. He was the third generation to take the reins of the hotel, following in the footsteps of his father Dan and grandfather Yab. The family story began in 1936 when a young Yab Bowden came to the small country town of Marburg with a dream. The family struggled to keep the pub going through the Great Depression, during the Second World War and the closure of the coal mines. But eight decades later, the Bowden family still provides a place where the people of Marburg and tourists can gather, celebrate special occasions, make lifelong friends and, of course, grab an ice cold beer at the end of a long day. To this day, regular patrons of the Marburg Hotel say it's like being in an extended family. The Marburg Hotel was run for decades by Yab and was known as Yab's Pub for a long time. Matthew's father Dan bought it 40 years ago and Matthew was at the helm of the community hub for most of the last decade. Matthew shared his father and grandfather's love of the pub and the community. Yab was known for saying, if there was a light on inside, it's okay for people to come in and have a beer, no matter the time. Matthew was excited to take over the pub from his father Dan and said his aim was to get the pub back as the town's focal point. He was such a big part of the town over the years. And I think it's lost that a bit, he said in the Queensland Times in 2015. Matt was determined to put his own stamp on the pub and keep the family legacy continuing into the future. He was well and truly on his way and was instrumental in slowly but surely bringing the old pub back to life. Up until his final days, Matthew continued to keep an eye on operations at his beloved pub. Family and friends celebrated Matthew's life on the 2nd of December at St Mary's Church. And this will be followed by an interment at Tallagala Cemetery. The Marburg community, as are we, are heartbroken by the passing of Matthew. On behalf of the city, I offer our thoughts and prayers for his partner Lauren and five-year-old daughter Miller. We are grateful for the time and passion Matthew put into the Marburg community. He is and will continue to be well and truly missed.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. I think 42 is too young to go and Matt would be very much missed. So you're moving that condolence motion? Yep, do I have a second to that? Thank you councillor Ireland, all those in favour. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We move on to item seven, which is the presentation of petitions. And we've received a petition from the residents of Camero requesting council consider shade trees and other structures for the dog off-leash park at Camero. May I ask if one of the Division Two councils would like to speak to this petition?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak to it and thank Kathleen for bringing this to our attention, obviously. We are all encouraging of dog parks, that they increase physical activity, social interactions. And all dog parks should also be inclusive of all dogs and their pet owners. So I believe that they should be interacting in safety, no matter the breed that you have. So I'm just wondering if we can refer... So I move the motion that we receive and then refer this to the G I W committee?
Thank you. So I'd say the motion is the petition to be received and referred to the G I W committee for consideration and a report back to council. Do you have a timeframe that you'd like that back while I look at the CEO?
May I request a suggested timeframe? CEO?
Where's Mr Hilliard? Mr Martin? Would you like to offer advice, Mr Martin, on how long we would need to be able to consider that appropriately and come back to council?
Is that February 22?
February.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So the February round of the ordinary?
Thank you.
Well, we said that we're going to the G I W, so... Yes, we probably don't need the part of the ordinary, yeah. Go to the February G I W. Is that okay, deputy mayor, or you wish to? The G I W has full delegations. That's okay. Thank you. I'll open that, it's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Tully. I'll open it up for discussion. Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yeah, just briefly, and I think the standing orders restrict, I'm talking about the merits of this, but just to explain very, very briefly that there's an existing park there, dog park, off-leash dog park, but none for small dogs. And when I went out there, the resident said that the big dogs were maybe not eating, but harassing the small dogs. So whatever can be done, when that comes up, I'd certainly be supportive of it.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Move on to item eight, which is presentations and deputations and there are none. Public participation, there is none. So move on to declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Do we have any declarations before us? Thank you, councillor Madsen.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen form the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items 14.6 minutes of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, 14.7 minutes of special meeting of Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, items 15.6 development application 15770 slash 2021 slash MCU and 15.7 development application 16204 slash 2021 slash MCU. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee and our building in the Ipswich Trades Hall is very much adjacent and or nearby to some matters in those four items. As a result of my conflict of interest, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen. Appreciate the disclosure. Are there any other disclosures?
Thanks, Mayor, yep. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of 2009, I councillor Andrew Fekner inform the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in items number 14.6, 14.7, 15.6 and 15.7 as read in the agenda. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with my conflict by leaving the room while those matters are discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Fekner. Are there any other disclosures of declarations of interest? No, thank you very much councillor Madsen and councillor Fekner for your openness and for disclosing those and managing them properly. We move on to item 11, which is the confirmation of minutes. So I move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 18th of November 2021 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. I'll open it up for any discussion or questions. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. We've got item 12, which is a mayoral minute, and Vicky, if you could put the mayoral minute up there. And the mayor has three recommendations that the council denames the Paul Pasali Bridge at Springfield Central and conducts community consultation on renaming in line with council's naming procedure. And that council denames Pasali Drive, Yamanto and conducts landholder and community consultation on renaming in line with council's naming procedure. And C, that a report be prepared for a council meeting no later than May 2022 that outlines community sentiment on the renaming, costs associated and options for the potential renaming of these assets in line with council's naming procedure. Being a mayoral minute, it's moved and seconded, so I'll speak to it. Since our election in March 2020, this council has made significant progress in advancing the city of Ipswich and putting to bed the city's challenges of the past. In the past 20 months, we've done a lot to repair the reputation of our city and established this council as one of the most open and transparent in Australia. From the launch of the Transparency Integrity Hub to live streaming and documenting our decision-making processes for all to see, the appointment of our new CEO, as well as the incredible progress being made to revitalise our once-forgotten CBD, there's a lot for this council to be proud of. However, in closing the door to Ipswich's past, there is one issue that we have not yet resolved. Like many of you, it is something that I made a commitment to address as part of my election campaign and something I believe is still important to the Ipswich community. The name of a former mayor who has been found guilty of serious crimes, such as 27 counts of fraud, attempting to pervert the course of justice, perjury, official corruption and very sadly, two counts of sexual assault against a 23-year-old woman, remains etched into our public places and is seen by many in the community as an embarrassing reminder of a previous era. Council's naming procedure PD 006, section 1.4.15 states that council may consider renaming a road or another named facility where the name is that of a person who has been convicted of an indictable offence under the Criminal Code or an electoral offence contrary to the Local Government Act. I'm not proposing that we rewrite our city's history or remove all references to this former mayor. It's part of our history. However, feedback from residents and businesses suggests that there is interest in revisiting the name of two assets that continue to be a source of embarrassment for our city. This motion proposes renaming of two council-owned assets connected to Paul Pasali, the Paul Pasali Bridge and Pasali Drive, Yamanto, and conducting community consultation to rename them in line with council's naming procedure. I believe our community wants us to move on from the actions of the past and should be given the opportunity to have a say how we close the book on this chapter. I open it up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. I go around the room, those in favour of myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan, councillor Coonselman. Those against? There are none. Those abstaining? There are three abstentions, councillor, deputy mayor and councillor Tully. The motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to item 13, which is business outstanding, including conduct matters and matters lying on the table, there are nil. So we'll move on to item 14, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. I'll move on first to the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee. And as the chair, I move that the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee report number 2021 in brackets 11 of the 1st of December 2021 be noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Coonselman. I'll open that report up for any discussion? No, thank you very much. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. I move to 14.2, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of the GTC if you'd like to move and speak to that.
Yes, I would like to move the report on the minutes of that committee. In regards to the items that we dealt with, I'd refer to the reports, they're all quite substantive, I believe we've all read them and that's enough for me.
Thank you, so moving all items in batch, one through to seven, thank you very much, councillor Madsen. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion on the GTC? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item 14.3, which is the Community, Culture, Arts and Sports Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee if you'd like to move that and speak to it.
I'd like to move that councillor adopt the recommendations of the Community, Culture, Arts and Sports Committee. From the 1st of December 2021, the substantive highlights from the committee were the recap on the wonderful Spark Festival, which we were very excited about and there was lots of forward-focused conversation in the committee about what we might be able to achieve next year with an even bigger and better Spark Festival. We recommended to the full council to change and alter the opening hours of the Rosewood Library to better fit the community out there, which is also a wonderful win for the local community. And we just generally discussed all of the achievements of the committee of the year and I think that the highlight could have gone on for another five to 10 minutes more. And it was a great opportunity for us to stop and reflect on, you know, how busy we have been this year and all of the things that we were able to achieve. Often, we're looking to our next problem or we're looking, you know, to our next big event and we don't often get time to reflect on that. So the live stream of last week's committee would be really worthwhile to re-watch if you want a recap of all of the wonderful things that we as a committee have been able to achieve and drive this year. And I'm really proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Coonselman. I'll open it up for discussion. I think the only thing I'd like to thank you councillor Fekner and councillor Coonselman for your leadership of this particular committee, so important to the integral part of our community spirit. Thank you very much. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item 14.4, which is the Economic and Interdevelopment Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that to hopefully move and to speak to it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to move the recommendations from that committee. And just go on to say that the Small Business Growth Programme that we moved to adopt in the committee, that I suggest everyone move as well here. I'm really, really excited for our small business community that some of this will kick off early next year. There's some really great programmes there to get our small businesses up on, you know, e-commerce platforms or to look to new endeavours to, you know, strategise. And some of these things, small business owners don't particularly put their mind to because they're too busy trying to do their principal work and make the money and put food on the table. So I'm really supportive of the programme. And there was also an economic development update. And in that, I would just like to call out that I met one of the gentlemen that used our small business food truck friendly programme during COVID. And he actually told me on the weekend that it helped him survive through the pandemic. So he was able to go through parks in Ipswich and keep trading throughout. And he couldn't get that anywhere else. So he was really, really thankful. And his name is Russell from Loving Donuts, a big shout out to Russell. And I didn't initiate the conversation, I went to get a donut. And he was, yeah, so even just that alone has touched someone in our region. And I, yeah, I just think that that's fantastic. And there's so much more that that update represents as well, from operation scale up to, you know, all of our grants that we've put through COVID for our small businesses as well. But I just wanted to mention Russell because his donuts are awesome and we helped him in his small business. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnick, for moving that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madsen. Open up for any discussion? As I say, it's great to see our policy, such as the food truck friendly council that councillor Madsen initiated is being used and utilised within our city. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We now move on to item 14.5, which is the Environment and Sustainability Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that to move and to speak to the committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that the recommendations of the last committee meeting be adopted by council. The make-up being two agenda items and also one matter arising. The items specifically were the adoption of the Sustainability Strategy, a very large piece of work that council has undertaken. I'd like to further commend officers of the branch for the extensive work that has been undertaken. The Sustainability Strategy is one of those items that touches on every other part of work that this organisation does. So it is a very substantive piece of work. The other main item was the outcomes of the Youth Sustainability Summit. A report was provided on that. But most importantly, was a very amazing presentation to committee by the Sustainability Squad from Springfield Central State School. Wonderful young people came in and detailed to us their efforts and activities towards promotion of a better world for the future. So I would like to express to those young people and all students who attended the Sustainability Summit for their input and the fantastic outcomes that they've achieved. The matter arising that was dealt with was the update on the Traditional Owner Reference Group whereby a report, it was discussed at the 16th September 2021 council meeting. It was referred to the November Environment Sustainability Committee. For further consideration, the committee noted that a report is scheduled to be submitted to the February 2022 Environment Sustainability Committee. With that, Mayor, I have moved the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, and councillor Fekner, your second? And to our own, if we're under discussion, our very own Sustainability Squad. Yourself, councillor, and councillor Fekner, thank you very much for your very active leadership in this space. Any discussion?
Just through you, Mayor. I just, the Sustainability Squad thanks the council very much for being so welcoming. It was a bit of a highlight for them, so.
So, thank you.
I think it was a highlight for us. Thank you. Ask councillor Milligan?
If I may add to that ma'am, I must say, even at my young age, not, only halfway there, that just meeting and interacting with those young leaders within their school community, that if that's the quality of leadership we'll have in the future, I will sleep very well at night knowing that in the future they'll be looking after matters on our behalf.
Thank you councillor Milligan. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll move on to item fourteen point six. And just note that today we will have two reports from the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. Yes. Thank you. Just note today, we will have two reports from the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. One is the one that was held last week. One is from the special meeting that we held this morning at, at eight o'clock. So I'll go on to the first one, which is fourteen point six, the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. And I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see if she'd like to move that and, and speak to it.
Thank you ma'am. Yes, I confirm the recommendation that council adopt recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, first of December twenty twenty-one. There were a number of reports, I guess. If I could just make a general comment in, in relation to my committee this year, I'd just like to call out the Nicholas Street Precinct team for activation of the space. We currently have our, our Christmas in Nicholas Street or St Nicholas Street. Christmas activities and, and events underway. The, the group need to be commended for activating the space. As we move our way through filling the, the tenancies, it's been so important for council to activate the space and, and they've done that beautifully. So thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this? Thank you councillor Kunsman. We'd like to speak to or discuss this matter? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. And now move to item fourteen point seven, which is the Special Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee that was held at eight o'clock this morning. Again, I'll refer to the chair of that if she would like to move and speak to that.
Thank you ma'am. Yes, I move that council adopting the recommendations of the Special Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, number twelve twenty twenty-one, today's date being the ninth of December twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll move into discussion and if you do need to go into closed session, just, just let me know. But yes.
Thank you ma'am. I would just like to start by saying what a way to end the year. Today's special, we we've moved to a position where we, we have a new lease, another new lease, another new tenant ready to, to set up in our Nicholas Street precinct. And then secondly, and so importantly, we're moving one step closer to securing our cinema operator. We're moving into the final leg of, of negotiations and expect potentially around three, in three months' time, the commercial aspects of that deal will be presented to council for a decision. Just really, really excited to be in this position and, and can I just say with a queue of prospective tenants entering into legal negotiations with council. So a, a great way to end the year.
Agreed councillor Doyle. Thank you. Any other discussion on that item? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll just pause now to wait for councillor Madsen and councillor Fekner to return. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to officers' reports. Item fifteen is the Development Application Recommendation, five six three six slash two zero, two twenty twenty-one MCU Community Use Childcare Centre for fifty-four to fifty-six Arthur Somerville's Road, Carrollley. May I, would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this? Am I getting a nod? Yes. May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern please? Please set your name and your job title.
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Councillor Doyle.
I guess if I could just start with a general question, across Ipswich and, and across our Division Three that councillor Fekner and I look after, daycare centres are opening very regularly and, and not all come before council for a decision. Can I just understand why this one's coming to council?
Yeah, that, that's correct. We do get quite a lot of applications for childcare centres. This is the only one we've brought to council in recent time. The reason this has been brought to council is due to the number of submissions received on the development application. Received two hundred and eighty properly made submissions and, and that's the reason why it's been brought to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr Bowles? No, thank you.
With, sorry, yeah. With quite a significant amount of properly made submissions against, the officer's recommendation here is to approve. I think it might be worth for the record to stepping, stepping us through exactly the reasons as to why we are approving this application when there is so much community unrest about this. And it's probably worth noting the timing of responses from the applicant to council. The independent review panel process and all of this. And what the applicant's thoughts are around the recommendations of the independent review panel process. And then supplementary to that, I guess, council's ultimate conditions that we put on it. There's twenty-six very strict conditions on this development approval that sits before us today. And I think that I've seen a bit of correspondence through the inbox and questions in the community with regards to a general feeling that the applicant hasn't responded to the independent panel review process or, or, or the recommendations of that group. I mean, the applicant, is it correct they had an opportunity to respond to the independent review panel?
Yep, I, I can talk through that if you like and we'll step through the process.
That would be great.
Yeah, sure. So the starting point, I suppose, is the, the number of submissions, two hundred and eighty submissions. In addition to triggering the need for the application to be decided by council, it also triggered the need for the independent decision review panel process, which also included a public hearing component. So the public hearing component was held and there were a number of community members who addressed the panel directly. There was quite good attendance from the community at the panel hearing. It was an impressive session and the, the views of the panel, well, the attendees were expressed really, really well and the panel were able to hear the concerns from the community, not just by reading the submissions. They were able to hear them and have them expressed in the clearest terms possible. So the panel, having heard those views and read the views and read the application material, considered the application and made some recommendations to council to change the proposal fairly significantly. The original proposal was, the proposal after the information request was a childcare centre for up to a hundred children. The recommendation from the panel was to reduce the number of children to seventy-five children, a maximum of seventy-five children. The basis of that decision or the discrepancy between the hundred children that we were originally recommending and the seventy-five children from the, or maximum seventy-five children from the independent decision review panel stems from the community need, whether it's an acute, immediate community need or a longer term community need. So in the report, you'll see that there are some timeframes that deal with when that capacity will be consumed. So I think it is in twenty twenty-six, there'll be a need for about seventy-one spaces. So that's, that's a fairly short term need. We're talking five years and then we'll be reaching the rough limit of that facility. So the original recommendation for a hundred spaces allows for community growth up to twenty forty-one. So that explains the discrepancy between the hundreds places to the seventy-five spaces. However, one of the fortunate benefits of reducing the size of childcare centres, we deal with a lot of the other impacts that the community were concerned about. So there were concerns about the number of parking spaces. There was concerns about manoeuvring of vehicles for effluent collection, concerns about noise and things like that. So those concerns were, were heard. There is still more work to be done by the applicant with the conditions we've imposed. But those are the things that the panel considered when they made their recommendation to council. So the next step after the recommendation, the council officers gave the applicant an opportunity to respond to these points. We issued a letter and the recommendation and we sought changes to the proposal to match the IDRP recommendations. There was a small amount of changes made to the proposal, but the, the main change, the key change, the reduction of the number of children wasn't something the applicant was willing to do at that point in time. So what we've done is we've imposed conditions that we require the applicant to submit plans showing a new facility with a reduction of number of children, the, and the appropriate parking spaces for the number of staff. So they'll be required to submit details on the number of floor staff, directors, food staff and things like that to to council. So we'll, we'll be able to derive the parking rate from that. So the reduction in the number of children reduces the size of the building as well, reduces the noise impacts, but also gives more spaces for manoeuvring of vehicles and things like that.
And to my mind, I think that's the missing link. It's still receiving questions and quite a flurry of them over the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours with regards to the way that this paper is written and the interpretation of what council's final position actually is. But it's contained very clearly within the conditions that we see. And for those playing along at home, page twenty of the Separate Attachments Report, yeah, we can clearly see that six A, the childcare centre is approved to operate with seventy-five children at any one time. And just the significant impact that that has on the applicant. And, you know, that they have to essentially redraw, quite a substantial redraw before they come back to council so that we can essentially check off that they have met these conditions.
That's right.
So I think that there, there was confusion in the community that the response that the applicant gave to the independent, independent review panel's recommendations was the final application. And the final application that is seen in the report is the final application.
That's right.
However, you know, and, and it's a lot of words and it's not, it's not a very visual way of seeing what could potentially be realised. The officer's recommendations are really tucked away in those twenty-six very well considered conditions that, that we've placed on it. So thank you for that. There was one question still that to my mind is yet to be resolved about the, the need and the vacancy rates of local daycare centres. Have we done any work to see, you know, what the actual vacancy rates are? I believe there's publicly available information that we can access.
Yes, there's a government run website from the Australian Government called Childcare Finder. It is a tool for determining available spaces in childcare facilities. You're able to search by suburb. And I, I have looked at that personally and it was part of the conversation during the panel hearing about the availability of spaces. And, and just before I go too quickly into that, there's, I suppose there's two parts about the need. There's the immediate current need as of today. As if I wanted to send a child to a childcare facility, I'd need to find out if there's a space. But if I was to have a child in two years' time, I'd also want to know that, that was available. So the information available is basically this week, next week. And you're able to, by age group, zero to twelve months, twelve months to twenty-four months and so on, determine availability. And, and from my review, there are some gaps in the availability, pretty severe gaps. So Mondays are quite difficult to get a space for a, a young child of zero to twelve months.
Yep.
There are some gaps on Wednesdays and Fridays. It, it does vary, but if you needed to use one facility for a whole week, you would, you wouldn't be able to do that in Carrollley at the moment. You would be able to have one day in one facility and another day in a second facility. And some facilities are completely booked out. So there, there is availability for older children. Children that are also able to go to kindergarten and prep. So, so the information I'm presenting or speaking about is available on the Childcare Finder website.
Thank you. And just a final question, and this is with regard to the independent decision review panel. The report in its executive summary has a bit of a recommendation here and that the IDRP recommendation is to agree with the proposed council recommendation to approve the development application subject to changes or inclusion of any additional conditions. Do we ever go back to this independent panel with our conditions to ask them if that they are actually satisfying the recommendations of the review panel?
We, we are able to do that. In most cases, the, and in this case, the recommendations are clear enough for us to be able to, to carry out on conditions. So for example, the reduction in the number of children is as simple as applying that condition.
Yeah.
And the, the conditions from, from a traffic perspective are very specific. The panel members do a great service to us by being able to elucidate their concerns in a manner that we are able to pick it up and turn it into a condition or a change. So I think for other panel applications, we, we have sought clarification. I think the one with the application, there was some clarification sought, but it wasn't necessary.
They were explicit enough.
That's right.
And you feel that you're satisfied to that end?
That's right, I'm satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles. Thank you very much. The recommendation is that council approve development, that the development application is listed, subject to the conditions contained in attach one of this report. Do I have a mover for that?
I'll move.
A second? Councillor Doyle? I'll now open it up for discussion.
As the mover, I'd like to speak in favour.
Sorry, my apologies councillor.
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favour of this recommendation to approve. This application has seen much scrutiny and it's gone through a very thorough process to ensure that the end result is one that minimises the impact on the broader community and one that recognises the concerns and turns those concerns into a formal position where that can actually be translated into a condition for the development approval. And I think that the officers have done a really wonderful job collating all of the information from the independent review panel and incorporating that into a list of twenty-six very stringent conditions that will completely change the face of this application. You know, the applicant still may not agree to, you know, to the conditions that we're imposing on them, but these are the conditions that I believe come through and ring through the community sentiment that was heard throughout the entire process. I mean, we're asking the applicant to minimise the amount of, the amount of children allowed at the centre at any one time from a hundred down to seventy-five. You know, that's a significant decrease. And along with that, the impacts of the centre are significantly changed. You know, I, I could speak to, to all of the conditions, but they are outlined in the report. Hours, earthworks, design standards, like this, this has gone above and beyond in my mind to ensure that the community sentiment is reflected in the conditions on this application. So I just want to thank the council officers for their work and the independent decision review panel for being a part of this process and allowing us to have lots of opportunities for the community to plug in and be heard. I speak in favour of the recommendation I put forward.
Thank you councillor Fekner. And I think the original, I'm looking at Mr Bowles, was a hundred and sixteen children?
At the beginning.
At the beginning.
At the beginning, down to seventy five, thank you. I couldn't for any other discussion. Councillor Milligan?
Thank you, ma'am. I do note that, of course, the proposed development has been assessed with regard to the applicable assessment benchmarks and that we here in this place are now determining the matter in accordance with the framework. The matters that really stick out in my mind, I have engaged personally in extensive consultation with the Caralee community, particularly those in the immediate area, but also right across that suburb. The matters that ring true are the number of signatories to the petition that I tabled on, on behalf of the residents and the number of submitters. We can view the application in that there is one adjoining, immediate adjoining residential property. However, the, the impact isn't just precluded just to that one property. In terms of effect of impact, size of impact, that one property, of course, will be mostly impacted. It doesn't matter the number of residents who are impacted. We also, we must consider also the level of impact to even if it is just one resident. The independent decision review panel outcomes, of course, very much took into account the matters raised by the submitters. All those submitters submitted their information, which was extremely relevant to the matter. Also would like to refer to the applicant's response in writing. It wasn't from the, the applicant's planning consultant, it was from the applicant. And in reading that, I have concerns about, there is, I'm reading an intent in there that there is a, there is no willingness to comply with things such as the staff ratio to, to students with respect to the, the relevant industry standards. The matters that affect or are going to impact the residents of Caralee, whether there are adequate parking for all staff, that's including support staff such as the cook and the director. I've heard and taken note of discussion wherein it cannot reasonably be expected that the director of a childcare centre with one hundred or in the case of the recommendation, seventy five people in their care can also be on the floor at the same time, likewise as the cook. There are specific duties to be carried out there. I don't believe that both duties can be carried out concurrently. The proposed development will have a significant detrimental impact on the amenity of nearby residents. I, I don't believe that the proposal demonstrates compliance with the required assessment benchmarks and that further conditioning cannot be included to overcome those conflicts. Some of those in, in particular that have been raised are increased traffic volumes on Somerville's Road and, and the entrance street. If there is insufficient onsite parking, then there will be overflow into the nearby street and that will impact residents in the immediate area. Regardless of what time it is, whether it's early morning, late afternoon or at school pickup drop off times, I have myself personally stood there at numerous times, numerous days, at various times and observed that the, the on-street parking by parents collecting students from the school or dropping them off goes for extended periods of time, not just your standard quarter to three to three fifteen. It extends well beyond that in the afternoon. Other specific matters that I don't believe that the impact will be adequately addressed by conditioning is the adequate onsite effluent treatment and disposal. Currently, this Caralee State School has a similar situation where effluent needs to be on a regular basis trucked off-site. It's collected by vacuum pump, tanker and removed. I, I have concerns with regards to the timings of the arrivals of that service and the, the onflowing impacts from that. I believe the proposal has a detrimental impact on the amenity of nearby residents due to that, due to generation of odours, noise and the waste product. The proposal also, I, I believe, does not provide an uncongested traffic flow within the parking area. It's not only the vehicle queuing off-site causing conflict between vehicles, but in the proposal that has been assessed, within the onsite parking area, there are matters where large service vehicles will not be able to manoeuvre onsite to be able to leave site in a forward gear. Whether, whether the restrictions from this council's, council officer's recommendation affects the commercial viability of the proposal is not a consideration in this matter. The, the main point that, that I have taken consideration to is that due to the impacts, it's not that the residents of Caralee are against future childcare centres. Of course not. It is that due to that specific location, that lot, the impacts won't be able to be managed accordingly. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. Councillor Conzaman, you wish to speak to it?
Thank you, Chair. As a Division Four councillor, there are three influences on my decision. Council officers' reports and recommendations with due consideration of the conditions that will be imposed, the independent review panel recommendations and the developer's response, residents' opinions, residents' opinions and the degree of objection to which they are prepared to lend their names. The independent review panel agreed that the submitters' objections were worthy of consideration. I believe there are many issues that impinge on this decision. There are unresolved issues in relation to conditions. And in fact, I'm not convinced that this development can be sufficiently conditioned to overcome the conflict and the loss of amenity. There are still significant issues with effluent treatment, noise, traffic and parking, as councillor Milligan has outlined. I have listened and consulted extensively and have searched my heart for the right decision. And speaking for myself, I cannot agree with the development in this space. Having said that, it is important to acknowledge that with the current growth rate within the local government area, residents are not promised that nothing in their suburbs will change. Further development at Caralee and elsewhere is inevitable and we have to deal with this. And we are obligated to ensure that where suitable, development is not impeded. In this case, however, I cannot vote for this development.
Thank you councillor Conzaman. Councillor Tully?
Yes, thanks, ma'am, ma'am. I endorse the comments of the previous two speakers and they are closer to the action and the circumstances than certainly that I am. But I have read all of the documentation, particularly in relation to issues such as the non-conformity with the large lot residential zone, that the need for the development based on the numbers proposed by the applicant won't be met until two thousand and forty one. There are other issues about the width of the landscaping in that zone for that sort of development. And that's particularly relevant to the, to the house immediately adjacent, but to the wider residential community. And I think it's always important when the, an approval of the development within a residential zone is considered, it's not just how many people are affected, but even if there's one individual seriously affected, I think that's a matter for us as a council and as councillors to seriously consider. The proposed use, in my view, based on the information I've read, provides inadequate or insufficient car parking spaces. There are serious issues about refuse collection and the hours of refuse collection and effluent collection on the property. There is no sewer available, as people would be aware. And with such a large scale development and the manual extraction of effluent from the site leaves a lot to be desired. Even the report itself suggests that the pedestrian sightlines may not comply with the, or proposed by the developer may not comply with the Australian standard. And there's the overall issue that the development, the safety and security of users, pedestrians and adjacent vehicular movement would provide serious safety concerns. Having said that, I won't be supporting the motion, but I wish to propose a foreshadowed motion in the event that it's defeated, ma'am.
Please do, councillor Tully.
And I'll just, in the last couple of minutes, provide it to the committee clerk. And when that's up, I will read it for the benefit of persons who are, who are watching online.
May I just say something really briefly? I'd love to be present for the vote on this matter. But I've been working a lot of late nights and I've had a lot of coffee this morning. And I would seek your, an adjournment for five minutes so that I can return for the vote.
This is not an excuse. More than happy to do an adjournment at any time. May I let councillor Tully please put his foreshadowed motion up?
Well, perhaps if I just read the motion.
And then we'll, and then we'll do the.
And then, and then I will speak to it.
If that's okay.
Oh, well, sorry. No, no, I'm not speaking to the motion. I'm just foreshadowing the motion. Okay. The council refused development application number five six three six two oh two one MCU being a material change of use, community use childcare centre, having regard to the two hundred and eighty properly made submissions and a petition with five, eight hundred and fifty eight signatures objecting to the proposed development for the following reasons. A, the proposed use does not conform with the large lot residential zone as it will have a significant detrimental effect on the amenity of nearby residents in relation to interalia, noise, traffic and community safety. B, the proposed use does not fulfil a community need insofar as the proposed number of places is excessive, given that the projected places based on population forecast will not be required until two thousand and forty one. C, the proposed use is not readily accessible to the population it is intended to serve as it will exacerbate existing vehicular conflicts in peak hours with the nearby Caralee State School. D, the proposed use does not comply with the scale and appearance provisions of the Community Use Code insofar as the proposed two point four six metre landscape buffer does not comply with the minimum width of ten metres under the code, with such requirement being an essential buffer between adjoining residential uses. E, the proposed use provides insufficient car parking spaces as required under the car, under the parking code, taking into account all required parking for parents, director, administration staff, support staff and frontline, frontline childcare workers. F, noise generated from the site will have an unacceptable impact on the adjoining and nearby residential community. G, the hours of operation proposed by the applicant are six AM to seven PM with refuse and onsite effluent collection between seven AM and seven PM, seven days a week, including public holidays, would seriously affect the amenity of the immediate area. The proposed hours of refuse and effluent collection conflict substantially with the main arrival and departure times at the site, adding to unacceptable amenity, safety and odour issues for staff, parents and children. H, as there is no onsite sewer available to the site and the proposed alternative onsite effluent tanks are not suitable for such large scale development in a residential area, potential health and odour issues are likely to affect the amenity of the surrounding area. I, the operation of the proposed waste storage and collection partially obstructs pedestrian sightlines and is not complied with the Australian standard. J, the safety and security of users, pedestrians and adjacent vehicular traffic is compromised by the intensity and layout of the proposed development, which creates more substantial conflict with the nearby Caralee State School.
Thank you very much. It's now a foreshadowed motion and I think some of you had the.
I would like to move an adjournment for ten minutes.
May I ask for thirty minutes? It's ten o'clock anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that okay?
Thirty minutes.
I guess if morning tea's a consideration.
Thirty minutes, come back at ten thirty. All those in favour? Thank you.
Thank you, welcome back from the adjournment, it's ten thirty and everyone is in attendance. Before we adjourned, we had a mover and a seconder of the recommendation, there was some discussion, and councillor Tully has moved a forwarded...
Foreshadowed.
Foreshadowed motion, so I'll just, I'll then, thank you very much for that. I'll then move around to keep going around to the chambers to see if there were any other discussion points that councils would like to make.
So I'd like to discuss, thank you Chair, so a question, this development application, I think that its impact assessable for a reason, and I don't believe that the residents won't be detrimentally impacted particularly by the effluent collection vehicle. I personally live across the road from a service station, and whilst I can sleep through it getting ram raided, it is very, very loud when the trucks do come to refuel, and I don't believe that truck drivers read DA conditions either. I'm currently looking at putting cameras along Brisbane Terrace for conditions from the Red Bank industrial peninsula in relation to trucks using that incorrectly based on a DA condition. So whilst I note that the conditions are there, and are there to help alleviate any impacts to residents, I don't believe from a practical sense that that will make a difference. I think that there'll be a lot of complaints coming through if the effluent collection trucks are going on site during business hours, and if there's no exit point from the car park, I don't believe that a truck driver is not going to slam his gear into reverse to get out of any area, so what am I trying to say? I'm trying to say that there's going to be a lot of complaints come through from residents, probably from parents of the childcare centre if there's an effluent truck collecting there during the times of pick-up and drop-off. We're going to have associated costs with compliance, they're going to have issues with that private company that are going to be wanting to come out of ours. There will be one or two times most likely that they will come out of ours, and then we're going to have complaints from the residents for the impact. So the fact that there's no city sewage on this site is very, very significant for me, and the character of the car park is also quite significant as well, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, any other discussion? I'd like to contribute, and I've got to say when I first looked at this application, I looked at it and I thought, wow, that's great, having a childcare centre opposite a school, as a mum of three kids who use long daycare, you know, having the double pick-up and drop-off, I sort of looked and thought it was fantastic. But I guess the devil's always in the detail, and when you look at the DA, it's moving from a rural residential zone property to a childcare centre. Look, an assessment has been, and I guess for me I will be voting against this, and the reason for my decision is that an assessment of the application material for the proposed use has been undertaken against the relevant codes of the Ipswich planning scheme in 2006. The proposed development does not provide adequate parking for all staff, including support staff such as the cook and director. The proposed development will have a detrimental impact on the amenity of nearby residents. It is concluded that the proposal does not demonstrate compliance with the assessment benchmarks, and further conditions cannot be included to overcome the conflict. Therefore, it is recommended for a refusal based on the following: The proposed development does not comply with Part Four, Division Four, Large Lot Residential Zone of the Ipswich Planning Scheme as the following overall outcomes or specific outcomes have not been met. Overall outcome, section 4.4.2c, the proposal is not provided with adequate onsite effluent treatment and disposal. Specific outcomes, section 4.4.3.3d, the proposal has a detrimental impact to the amenity of nearby residents through the generation of odours, noise and waste products. Section 4.4.3.7, the proposal is not provided with adequate onsite effluent treatment and disposal. The proposed development does not comply with Part Twelve, Division Nine, Parking Code of the Ipswich Parking Planning Scheme as the following specific outcomes have not been met. Overall outcome, section 12.9.4.2a, the proposed design does not provide an uncongested traffic flow within the parking area, thereby increasing the potential for vehicle queuing off-site and conflict between vehicles. And specific outcome, section 12.9.5.2a, the proposed development does not make adequate provision for onsite parking commensurate with the needs of the use. Is there any more discussion? I'll go to the person who moved it, would you like a write-up reply?
Yeah, I just want to bring to everyone's attention a few of the points that have been made within the discussion that we have undertaken in this morning, and I probably need a council officer to help me answer a few of the questions that I might have, and just for clarification from a technical expert rather than me reading conditions verbatim, so if I could ask...
Mr Bowles?
Mr Bowles, if that's okay.
Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
So firstly, I just want to speak to the adequate onsite effluent treatment within the proposal. So, you know, in the applicant's current proposal, which is not being considered here this morning, rather we're considering the conditions that council is imposing on this particular application, to your mind, has that, or could that be potentially achieved with the conditions that council has put on the applicant?
Yep, so just with respect to those concerns, there are some conflicts with the current plan, and I understand those points of view, which is why we're seeking to reduce the proposal, and the applicant has to submit new plans showing, demonstrating that the vehicles can enter and exit in forward gear, and also manoeuvre on the side. So there are conditions also requiring the applicant to submit a management plan that will, that will deal with the times and the manner which the collection occurs, so details about the tank and the vehicles and the vacuum system that is there. There's also restrictions on the hours of operation and also the hours of collection for the waste to manage those impacts. So the expectation is in the new design, we'll receive engineering designs that show the sweat pass of the vehicle entering and exiting the site in a forward gear, being able to access the system, and a management plan that deals with things like odour and noise and so forth about the containment system and the bonding system to deal with the impacts of the effluent treatment, effluent collection. So we believe that there are conditions that can manage that, and certainly that's the common practice is to condition some of these impacts. And with respect to some of the comments about compliance, compliance with conditions can be a difficulty for council, however, the presumption is that conditions will be complied with, we aren't, if we were to take the approach that all conditions won't be complied with or that could be complied with and sometimes not complied with, the planning system would have difficulties with that because in ninety-nine percent of the cases, operators act in the best interests of their business and the community and comply with their conditions. So we aren't able to have the presumption that they weren't able to comply, but we can construct conditions in a way that can be measured and compliance can be determined. And that hasn't always happened, there are occasions in the past where conditions are a little less measurable. I think this one will be measurable as we've got hours of operations and we've got methods of determining compliance and non-compliance.
So as a requirement, the applicant would have to submit a management plan...
That's right.
...which wouldn't require the effluent truck to reverse on-site?
The vehicle should be able to manoeuvre in a forward gear, on the current plans, that is impossible.
Yes.
And that's why we seek new plans for that purpose to demonstrate that. So the current proposal has that issue, and I understand that, so we are seeking changes to address that concern.
So yeah, we're addressing that by altering their hours from six AM till six thirty PM for that collection, and asking them to provide us with a management plan.
That's right.
And expecting them to comply with that.
That's right.
I guess the other, the other point that's been made this morning is with regards to the adequate car parking. Yes, in the current plan, I don't believe that there is adequate car parking, but council's condition six A that says that seventy-five children are allowed at the centre at any one time, does that condition go far enough to capture the adequate parking on-site for the children and also the employees of the centre?
I think the condition is specific enough that it mentions that support staff are included in the full-time equivalent employee count for the car parking rate. So to draw upon a similar scenario, we have had actual applications come in where people have sought to change their development approval because they have hired more staff or they have hired more support staff, and they needed to construct more car parking to accommodate those staff. So that happened in a childcare centre in Belbert Park. So we have had pretty good success in that space in making sure that enough parking spaces are provided. Certainly by reducing the size of billing from a billing that can have the capacity of a hundred children to seventy-five children increases consequently the space available for additional parking. So on one hand, we'll be getting the information specifically about the full-time staff and support staff to then determine the amount of parking, which would be demonstrated on the new plans that be submitted. So I believe the conditions that we've drafted should be able to manage that impact.
And I just wanted to briefly touch on the broader traffic network surrounding...
Point of order, Mayor, the person responding, having been the mover of the motion, is not entitled to introduce new material either themselves or via a third party, and I think it's going beyond the nature of our debate, and the response should simply be the response to the specific matters rather than going back into more detail beyond what was discussed. And I've never seen a situation like this in my time here, and I think it's inappropriate and it puts staff in a difficult position.
I'm seeking technical clarification of matters contained within the paper.
If I could speak to that, councillor Feigny is doing a write-up reply, as you'll find that I usually have a very informal meeting procedure. I do like, it's a very emotive topic, it's in the community, I would like to give the council the opportunity, and I think he's touching on areas that have been raised, but thank you very much councillor, continue councillor Fickner.
Yeah, I'm not of the view that I'm introducing new material, I just seek clarification on the difference between the application that sits in front of us and the conditions that seek to alter that for the applicant. No further questions, so thank you Anthony.
Thank you, so we're in the write-up reply.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add, councillor Fickner in the write-up?
No, just that once again, I'm satisfied with the conditions that council has imposed on this development, you know, car parking, effluent collection, they've all been covered off to an adequate standard to my line, so that's why I reaffirm my position and I support the recommendation for us.
Thank you councillor, I now put the matter to the vote, those in favour of this report, please raise your hand. Councillor Fickner has raised his hand, those against, please raise your hand. And it's myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Island, councillor Johnat, councillor Tully, councillor Milligan, councillor Kuncleman. So the motion did not pass, we now look to the foreshadowed motion.
Thank you Mayor.
We read it out before morning too, I won't let you read all up to A to J.
I'll formally move the motion that I read before the break.
Thank you, and I think councillor Milligan is seconding that. Would anyone like to, would you like to speak to that councillor Tom?
Just briefly, I think the, I'll just make a few comments, that this is a decision or a recommendation to have a decision to refuse this development application for the reasons A to J, which have been specified in the recommendation. There's two reasons for the, two reasons for the specification of that, is that the Act requires council in the current circumstances to give its reasons for its decision, which is different from the officer's recommendation, and secondly to set the scene for the substantive reasons for the refusal. Now, this would then give the right, obviously if it's carried, of the applicant to go to the Planning and Environment Court, and any of the objectors or submitters would be able to join in if that went there. Now, council is not bound by the reasons that are specified here, it could utilise any or all of the reasons as well as additional reasons to maintain our position if it went to the Planning and Environment Court. Now, I've touched on in the debate and also in reading the recommendation, the key issues A to J for the refusal, I believe they're substantive, I'm not going to dwell on each one of those, but I think they're quite substantive, that we do have adequate grounds for... we do have adequate grounds for refusing this application, that we should refuse it, we should respect the concerns of the serious concerns of a large number of people in the community. And I take some comfort in the fact that under the Queensland legislation, a matter before the Planning and Environment Court, an appeal is called a hearing de novo. In other words, the court starts afresh from the start to determine the application, not who said what, who promised what, and how the matter was proceeded with rightly or wrongly. It's just simply hearing and determining the application afresh. But I would just urge councillors, having made the previous decision to not to support the application, that it be refused on those grounds. And the future will take its course. At least, we can hold our head up high as in this situation and say that we've reflected the overwhelming views of the Carolee community.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. I guess for me, the my reserve of decision are also tabled there, agree with you there, and which parts of the planning scheme they apply to. So thank you very much. For any other discussion? Yes, councillor Milligan?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just bring to notice of the chamber that two of the submitters on this proposal have come to this place and are sitting in the gallery observing. I, in discussing this matter, hope that this motion gives further confidence to the Ipswich community, that this elected council does consider all matter on its merit, whether in the for or against, in deciding, and that clearly councillors, regardless of division from where they elected, are here to represent the entire Ipswich community.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, no, don't need a write-off reply, I guess councillor. We'll put the, put that foreshadowed motion A through to J to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And I can see it's myself, councillor Madison, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnnie, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Milligan, councillor Kunselman. Those against, councillor Fickner? Thank you. So that motion was carried. May I just say that I want to thank all the councils. This has been something that we've really spent a fair bit of time weighing up our obligations for growing city, as well as the concerns of residents. It's something that we've taken quite seriously from council officers, listening to residents and so on. So I want to thank everyone for an open and robust debate in a professional and respectful manner. Thank you very much.
Could I just endorse what you've just said, but also to particularly thank the council officers who have kept us informed. It's been, it's been a long journey, but we've received good advice.
Thank you, councillor Kunselman. We'll move on to item fifteen point two, which is the procurement tender one six eight three O, the civil construction works for Springfield Parkway and Springfield Greenback, Ontario, stage one. There are three recommendations there in our pack. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular matter? May I speak to the relevant council officer? From a procurement perspective, please.
Richard White, manager of procurement.
Thank you. So would you mind outlining how the buy Ipswich procurement policy impacted this procurement, this tender evaluation to ensure a higher content of local businesses?
Happy to, yes. So buy Ipswich approach, for over two hundred thousand dollars, tender requires that fifteen percent of the weighting be given to consideration for local content. It is different to our sub-two-hundred thousand, which requires local businesses particularly. In this case, we recognise the significance and impact on market. Instead, require that they indicate how much they would be spending. For this one particularly, we've garnered the response to say that twenty-two percent, which is roughly four million dollars worth of the contract, would be spent with local suppliers, which for the size and complexity of the contract, knowing that there is a lack of suppliers in the Ipswich area particularly, this is the best outcome that we could, we could hope for.
Thank you, Mr White. Are there any other questions, Mr White? Thank you, Mr White. I move recommendations A, B and C together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Now that's been voted on, I'll tell you who it is. Okay. I could let you know that now that's been passed, that council enter a contract or arrange it with Ippoca Constructions for the total sum of two million eight hundred and thirty-five, two million. Oh, sorry. Sorry? My apologies. It was written first, sorry. My apologies, I've just jumped ahead. My apologies. Sorry, it's written first. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was written before that. My apologies. We'll move on to fifteen point three, which is the procurement, construction of youth skate park at Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve. We have recommendations A through to B. This is concerning a report considering the recommendation to award a tender for construction of youth skate park at Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve. May we speak to the relevant council officer, please?
Richard White, manager of procurement.
Thank you. So probably similar to the previous question, what has been done to ensure local businesses are rewarded this?
Very similar to the previous one. Sadly for this one, I can't get the exact number. The information that I have available is that particularly they'll be looking at quarry re-vegetation supplies in the local business areas to be engaged. And we're in the final stages of identifying the suppliers or the subcontractors for this contract, and then we're looking at having an exact figure. But if identify re-vegetation and quarry subcontractors would be local suppliers.
And ask what community consultation was done in the design of this, or how was it going to, how was the needs of the local community of Red Bank Plains?
Yeah, I'll throw to my construction-
Thank you.
-colleagues for that. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Do you mind stating your name and your job title?
Yep, Anne Bailey, principal officer in construction.
Thanks, Ms Bailey. Do you mind letting us, taking us through what community consultation has been done, or how we're making sure that we build a really great facility for the people of Red Bank Plains?
Yep. Before we even started design, I believe we went out to the community through the Shape Europe Switch platform. We received feedback from that, which drove the design. And I know we're about to release basically an update on that to the community through Shape Europe Switch. I personally wasn't involved in the process, but if you want a more in-depth response, I can speak to the relevant officer and provide that too.
Right, so there was consultation?
Yes.
And was that provided as part of the tender?
Or is there a group that the successful tender speaks to? So the, so we've had a design, so we've gone out for this tender, it's just for construction. So prior to the design being done, we went out to the community through Shape Europe Switch to get some feedback on what the community would like to see within the skate park. We used that information to develop the design. And then from that, we've gone out to a contractor and developed the design, and now we're up to construction phase. So we're going out to Just Construct. So it's really just an update that's going out now to the Shape Europe Switch platform.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, councillor Ireland?
In your Just Construct, does it include lights?
Yes, there is lighting and CCTV cameras to the facility and the footpaths.
And where's the closest car parking? That's down at the picnic area.
So there's the car park that we've just built in the, as part of the toddler play space upgrade, so there'll be a footpath link to that. And there'll also be a footpath linking to the existing car park to the east, which is near the soccer fields there. So there'll be footpath linking from both sides to the-
So are you going to open up that little stub that will-
There won't, that's not as part of this construction. There isn't the intent to build that road through. It would be accessed through that road off Cedar, Cedar Road, the internal road through to that car park would still be the way you would access those two car parks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Ms Bailey? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I move recommendations A through to C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion? Thank you. Okay, councillor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. The Australian Bureau of Statistics has said that Red Bank Plains as a suburb is the third highest suburb in Australia with zero to fourteen children for population, and closely following on from that is Ripley Valley. So Red Bank Plains is, doesn't have sufficient activities, especially for the eleven to fourteen age group. We're very limited in what we provide. There are sporting fields, but again, you have to be able to afford the fees to play. So I am pleased to see that, that this is going to finally be built, because for me, it was mooted in about twenty seventeen, so I'm pleased to see that it's actually coming to fruition. And hopefully somehow it'll link up with the children's library that I hope will go back into Red Bank Plains Library in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland, councillor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased to see this project progressing. The Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve is probably one of the best assets that this city, city has for its people. Red Bank Plains has been built out in a period where higher density has been dictated by the various planning mechanisms. So these spaces for the community to come together in and play and interact and be active are really essential. And I'm very proud to see council investing in those sorts of facilities in that part of the world. We've all been at a lot of school graduations in the last week and award ceremonies, and I've seen the firsthand, the beautiful families in Red Bank Plains and all the wonderful children. And for them to have facilities that are built to a high standard, I'm really proud to be associated with that.
Thank you, councillor Madison. I think it's a natural progression. We've got a great toddler area, a great little area for primary school kids. It'd be great to see this skate park get up and done. Is there any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's passing carried, and again, I beg the indulgence of the chamber, my apologies for preempting. It's actually this particular motion where I'll announce that Ippoca Constructions will be the successful tender for that. My apologies to the chamber for jumping the gun there. Thank you. We move on to fifteen point four, which is the terms of reference review for standing committee. So this report is concerning the review of the City Council Standing Committee Performance Structure and Terms of Reference. And of that, we do a regular review of our terms of condition, our terms of reference to ensure that we maximise the output of our committees. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this particular report? No? In that case, I'll move recommendations A, B and C. Do I have a second for that? Yep, councillor Kunselman? Thank you. I'll then open it up for discussion. Any discussion on this report? Yes, councillor Kunselman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to see the introduction of the matters of public interest provision, and I give notice that I will be submitting a matter of public interest in January.
Wonderful. Thank you, councillor Kunselman, for that inclusion. If there's no other discussion, I'll move the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Fifteen point five, which is the report on the Audit and Risk Management Committee from the twenty-fourth of November. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? No, in that case, I'll move this report. Does anyone, do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Kunselman. Any discussion on this report? No, I'll put this report to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Fifteen point six, I'll just pause. Thank you. Thank you for that. Fifteen point six is a development application recommendation. Fifteen seven seven zero of twenty twenty-one MCU material change of use for eleven, nineteen to twenty-five and twenty-seven Nicholas Street Ipswich. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer for this? No? In that case, I will move the recommendation that council approved of the DA, being a material change of use to recreation use, indoor recreation gymnasium, subject to conditions as contained in attachment one of this report. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point seven, which is a development application recommendation for one six two oh four of twenty twenty-one MCU material change of use of five Union Place and Eight Bill Street Ipswich. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No, in that case, I'll move that council approved this DA, being a material change of use, extension to business use hotel, subject to conditions as contained in attachment one of this report. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's carried. I'll now pause. Wait for councillor Fickner and councillor Doyle to come. For councillor Madison.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Two items?
Yeah, it's ours.
Does that answer?
Thank you. We now move on to a late report, which is fifteen point eight, which is on the proposed ministerial call-in, this is his council's response to oneless. And the recommendation is that the chief executive officer provide a response to the notice of proposed call-in dated the twenty-ninth of November twenty twenty-one. And the response is to contain at minimum a summary of the matters, subject, a matter of this particular report that we've put up. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions? May I ask the, call the relevant council officer? Lecter, please.
Morning, council. Brett Davy, manager of city design.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Thank you for putting this pack together at short notice as well. Some of the letters in here, it's quite an interesting read. Some of these letters here, for instance, from March two thousand and eighteen onwards, have they been published publicly before? Or this is for the first time that they've been?
Not to my recollection. I think this is the first time they've been made public.
Yep. Okay. Were you involved with some of those letters in the past?
Yes, I'd say all of them, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, councillor Ireland.
I think that we need some clarification, because the media released by the state MP says that it's not been called in, that the minister is asking the community and council just for more information. So at what stage does it become a call-in?
Yeah, so this correspondence is a precursor to the call-in. It's a notice of intent from the minister. So the process is the minister makes it clear that he's got an intention to call in. In this case, he's given a timeframe to the twenty-first of December for people to have- for people to have their say in terms of the, the groups. It's been targeted to the assessment manager, as us, and the submitters that are associated with the application. So all of those parties have the ability to make comment on this proposal before a decision is made. I would not presume the thoughts of the minister or the state on the matter, but the 21st will be the date for those submissions to come in. Sometime after the 21st, they will make their, their decision and an announcement will come forth of whether they will call the, the matter in or not call the matter in. I expect that will not be before Christmas, though.
Any other questions, Mr Davy? Thank you, Mr Davy.
Thank you.
So I move this recommendation. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunselman. In speaking to this, this report I found very interesting. It found a consistent theme in regards to what is a state interest or not. We certainly found back on, and I'll go through the paperwork here. We have had a notification from the state indicating a consideration exercise of the call-in. And as we go through the paperwork, you can see the former mayor back on the 2nd of March 2018 wrote to the state government asking for four large landfills, much bigger than the one that's being considered here with Wondless, to, to call them in. And the response from the state, and I'll quote from here. Upon review of the Swanback Development Application, this is dated from the minister in 2018, I form the view that the development does not involve a state interest in a manner that warrants a call-in and that the P and E court is the appropriate forum for the matter to be resolved. Consequently, there will not be showing call-in notice. I note that the acting mayor back in on the 30th of June 2018 wrote again to the Queensland Government, again asking for a call-in. And again, the state government came back saying they would not call it in. It didn't address state interest. I then referred to a letter from the interim administrator on the 12th of August 2019, again asking for the state to call in those landfills as a matter of state interest. And again, it was knocked back saying it wasn't a matter of state interest. I guess in leading this discussion with my colleagues here, I guess I'm trying to grapple with the fact that why is this particular landfill application now a state interest when it's so clearly, doesn't matter who, doesn't matter who is sitting here, who's sitting there. It's been consistent from the people of Ipswich that we don't want any more new landfill. We've got, we've got eight privately owned landfills. We've got capacity there for, I think it was 19 years or something. I saw in some of the paperwork for that. So I guess I'm open to discussion on the floor here that we, we stay true to our, the IDRP process that we went through and, and through the, to the council resolution that we made, that we very much support the recycling component of Wondless, but we do not support a brand-new landfill in Ipswich. I guess I'll open up to the floor for, for views.
Yeah, I might just want to amend the recommendation to ensure that the correspondence is circulated with the elected group before it's officially sent to the minister.
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
Because we're asking the chief executive officer, obviously.
How would you like to amend that?
And B, and B, so that can be A. And that B, that, that, that the correspondence be shared and approved by the elected representatives. By-
Before being-
Mayor and councillors, yeah.
Yes. Before being sent out?
Prior to, yeah.
Prior, sorry.
Sorry, through you, mayor. Just for consistency in terminology, we're talking, B is now referring to correspondence. So let's call that the response, please.
Yes, the response.
I'm happy for that, yeah.
I'm happy, as the mover, I'm happy for that change, councillor Kunselman? Yes, you're, okay, thank you. So that's the, they're the active motions on the, on the floor?
Yes, I speak in favour of reiterating council's position. I think it's important for the minister to have the ability to understand this issue from council's perspective. Obviously, as stated in the report, there's lots and lots of history here. And, you know, the last minister that was written to appears to be Cameron Dick. So a new minister requires fresh information to be presented to him. And I just want to reaffirm council's position. We made the right decision at the time, you know. And I think that if the minister were to call this in, it would be a red hot shame for our community who fought hard to get this result alongside their council to ensure that we were making a decision, you know, in the community interest and that they weren't impacted by that. So, you know, I guess a few questions for the minister, and I'm sure that CEO, you'll capture this in the responses, you know, what constitutes state interest now that didn't prior? You know, with prior correspondences dating back to 2018. So I look forward to hearing the minister's response and I encourage the community to have their say between now and the 21st. This is our opportunity.
Thank you councillor Fittner. Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, mayor. I support your councillor's comments. And I know that the submitters on the last three that went in, that have spent two years putting effort into doing responses and turning up at court, I know that they're very nervous because they feel that they have spoken on behalf of the community, but it may all get overturned. So there's a lot of nervousness around Willow Bank at the moment.
Thank you councillor Ireland.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor-
Mayor, I concur with everyone's comments here this morning. Just like to add, I'll certainly be looking forward to seeing the response drafted that we are looking to provide. I, I just want to ensure that, and I'm sure it will, it will speak to the very robust decision-making that's occurred here in, in, in making the original decision. That is extensive work by the relevant officers in council, the independent review panel, and then of course, our work as, as elected reps in reviewing all of the documents, ensuring we are making the correct decision. So the process was there, is there, and it's open, I guess, for further discussion. However, I, I, you know, I'll, I'll certainly be looking to ensure we're outlining all the hard work and due diligence that's been done.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Councillor Madison?
I just wish to state that I remain confident in the decision that we made as a council some weeks ago now. It's going to go through this process, which we'll all be watching. And yeah, I just hope that the community continues to be consulted about decisions that impact them. I think that that's a great principle in our democratic society and every level of government should adhere to it.
Thank you councillor Madison. Any other discussion points? Just pardon me. I think I'll give the, the CEO at the floor.
There are others in the room that are more technical experts as me, than me rather, for council resolutions. But I'm just a little concerned about the use of the word approved when outside of an, an ordinary council meeting or a committee with delegations. I understand the intent. But, yeah, or supported, I was, I was thinking.
So look at changing-
I'll, councillor Tully, you're expert.
Yeah, typically what we do in these cases is just to use the word consult. Consult with the mayor and councillors prior to the matter being sent. And, and that didn't require an approval for the reasons that you said, but did require genuine consultation. And on the very odd occasion, sometimes something significant would come up and be agreed to informally by councils, with councilors, which would, you know, cause a change. I, I think that's probably a good word to use in these sorts of cases.
In that case, I'll, for recommendation B to change that, Vicky's written it, writing up there. That consultation occurred between the mayor and councillors on the response prior to being sent. Thank you, CEO. Thank you councillor Tully. As the mover, I'm happy with that. I'll just check with the second, councillor Kunselman? Thank you. So the, the live, the two recommendations, A stays the same and B has been amended. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll put recommendation A. Watch while Vicky finishes. I move that A and B, that as you can see on the screen there. All those in favour, please vote, raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. Item 16 is none of this is a motion, there are, sorry, 16. And item 17, questions on this, there are none. I move a procedural motion to suspend meeting procedures just for four minutes to provide a year of review, if I may. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. All those in favour? I think it's unanimous. Thank you. As a last meeting, today's meeting is the, the final meeting of council for 2021. And what an extraordinary year it has been in every sense of the word. Last year, 2020 was a year of, was unprecedented in our lifetimes and brought with it great challenges. This year, 2021 has been equally remarkable, but perhaps for different reasons. As a nation, we've continued to deal with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, juggling rapidly changing public health orders, lockdowns, new variants, and doing things remotely and online. For us as a council, it's certainly also been an extraordinary year. We are now, believe it or not, into month 20 of the 48-month term or a four-year term, as we're all elected in March 2020. 2020 was spent supporting our community through COVID, rebuilding trust and stabilising our council. 2021 has been a year of delivering for our city and for our community. This year, we've passed a record city budget with record funding for infrastructure, appointed a new CEO, opened this administration building and the children's library. We continue to assist the state government in managing the COVID situation, created and implemented important COVID support measures such as buy Ipswich procurement policy and continued on our pathway to be the most open and transparent council in the nation. If I look towards the budget, in 2021, council took a strategic decision to focus our budget and invest heavily on infrastructure, including asset maintenance and rehabilitation, investment in new work and a focus on delivering across the whole city. This year's budget saw a record 532.3 million total spend, including $156 million in capital works and continued investment in the Nicholas Street precinct. We introduced a dedicated curb and channel program, including for our established suburbs, a dedicated rural roads program and a three-year capital works Ford program. Published on council's website, the three-year capital works program gives residents transparency to let them know what's happening in their neighbourhood and help them hold us and council officers to account on work we have said that we do, our community deserve, and accountable council. Curbside Collection has returned as part of Budget 2021 and council has increased commitment to sports and community clubs and the arts and culture in this year's budget. As a responsible and accountable council, we take sustainability seriously. We have taken active steps to reduce our contribution to landfill and increase our recycling activities. Along with Lockie Valley Regional Council, we were the first council in Queensland to introduce a trial for the Food Organics Garden Organics, or FOGO, collection, with a view to rolling out the service out citywide in the coming years based on the trial experience. And glass has been returned to the recycling bins. I'll take, I'd like to take this time to also thank councillor Fittner for his leadership in successfully negotiating for the Enviro Plan Levy to go up, a one-off, huge boost for our community. Thank you very much, councillor Fittner. Council has also continued its support for businesses and residents going through COVID-induced hardship with continued rate relief and grant programs for struggling businesses. In regards to openness and accountability, as part of our drive towards rebuilding trust with the community, the nation's first transparency and integrity hub has continued to drive greater success to access data on council's finances and spending. We have maintained our commitment to posting details of council's finances, spending and councillors for all to see. We've even put the park mowing schedule onto an interactive map so all residents can see when their local parks are due for a trim, wet weather depending, of course. Other key stories this year have looked at, a look back on the Nicholas Street precinct redevelopment, the operations of council-owned bodies from previous eras, council's Ford procurement schedule and how payments received from the Tea Tree Energy Fund have been used. In regards to the Nicholas Street precinct, 2021 has seen the Nicholas Street precinct reach critical milestones. The new administration building opened in June this year, as did the children's library, the only one of its kind in the nation. It was a real honour to hear the delighted schools of children using the library for the first time, and I know it has been loved by thousands of kids, young, old, young and old since. The library is a truly amazing and wondrous place and a real asset to our community. Thank you to the staff who run this place and help to keep young imaginations fuelled. We also opened the new administration building earlier this year, marking a significant change in the way council delivers services. For the first time, staff are working from one location, apart from the depot staff, but we're all here in one location, and now have a modern and contemporary facility to serve the community from. The new administration building is an asset to our community for the long term and something we can be proud of as a city. Progress continues on the remaining works in the Nicholas Street precinct at a great pace, and I'm very excited to be able to open the final pieces of this highly anticipated puzzle and share the final product with the community. As a council, we've also delivered a number of important steps in rebuilding council following administration. We have a permanent CEO in, in place with Sonia Cooper. Sonia, thank you for your leadership when you stepped up to act as our CEO early this year. You've been a great support to myself and to the councillors, and I know the staff as well. And your leadership of the organisation has helped, helped it to flourish and grow over the course of the year. Congratulations again on your appointment and we look forward to tackling whatever 2022 will throw at us with your leadership to guide us and advise us. We've also continued to work on important changes to the way council does business, such as the continuing, such as continuing to improve the buy Ipswich procurement policy and new things like publishing a Ford procurement schedule so that local businesses knows what, knows what council will be looking at to purchase in time ahead. Our council's Ford procurement schedule is published online. It's essentially the council's order book and currently lists all major procurement that the council intends to make over the next 18 months, totaling over $91 million. Our buy Ipswich procurement policy has seen $54 million spent with local suppliers with a head or branch office in the Ipswich area in the past financial year. Our two chambers of commerce tell us this has had an enormous impact for our local businesses. Our experience in the economics of COVID has shown us that supporting local business to keep trading and to find new ways to do business is critical to ensuring they survive and that local economies stay afloat. I'm extremely proud of the way that council is looking at new and different ways we can support our community through changing our business practices and the impact that we can have on the economy. Finally, the Greater South East was confirmed as the Summer Olympic and Paralympic host for 2032, with Ipswich confirmed as host city for Olympic events such as the modern Panathinaikos and preliminary soccer matches. I'm delighted that Ipswich were part of this unforgettable event. It would be something everyone in the city will cherish and remember for many decades to come. While the event itself is still the best part of a decade away, the hard work to plan and deliver begins now. And I know myself and fellow councillors are looking forward to the coming challenge. Christmas in 2022 looks very different to 2021. For it may be the first time that many have seen their family in two years. For summer, it'll be the first time they meet their grandkids, their grandmas, grandads, aunties, uncles and family and friends. We have experienced an extraordinary time in our collective history and neither despite it or because of it, our city has weathered the storm and in many ways used the experience to emerge as a stronger community. Two more place below us is about to be transformed to the St Nicholas precinct ahead of the coming Christmas season and will play host to night markets over the coming weeks. Christmas and New Year is often a time of reflection on how far we've come and to reconnect with family, friends and loved ones. As the year draws to a close, I encourage you all to take time out to rest, recover and recharge over summer to reconnect with your loved ones. Finally, I'd like to thank the staff here at council who make the place run day in, day out and serve the city and its people. Every single one of you play a part in building the community we love and shaping our city for its residents and visitors. No matter how big or small a part you play, it's important and it goes a long way. From the road crews who build and maintain the roads we drive on, to the drivers who collect the bins, the city planners and building inspectors, the cultural centre and sports centre staff, the concierge and call centre staff, plus the many officers who facilitate community sports, arts, culture and economic development, too many to specifically mention. It's all important work. On behalf of myself and my fellow councillors, thank you for the work you do to make our city such a great place to live and work. To my fellow councillors, thank you for a year of meeting the many and very challenging- To my fellow councillors, thank you for a year of meeting the many and varied challenges that have come our way. I know we have had at times very robust discussions, but these have been important in advancing our city and arriving at the very best outcomes. It's been a pleasure to work with you all and thank you for the long hours that you've all given to this city. I'm looking forward to two thousand and twenty-two being a year of continued delivery, of more firsts and a year to advance the work that we've started over the last twenty months. Importantly, I thank our residents and I thank you for your feedback, your passion and dedication to work together as a community for us all to reach our potential. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and thank you, and I look forward to working with you all next year. I now move a procedural motion to resume meeting procedures. May I have a second after that? Thank you, Councilor Doyle. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you. I'll then close the meeting now at eleven twenty-six. Thank you.